Time flies when you're having fun.
Roll call.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Councillor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councillor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Reardon.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambuda.
Here.
Here, and Council President Novoselski. Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting Held on October 28th, 2013.
Are there any omissions, changes, corrections? Hearing is seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so order. Have suspension of rules. All in favor, all opposed, suspension. At this time, we can bring up late communication from the mayor regarding the superior offices and the Patrolman's Association union contracts. Councillor, you want to...
Mr. President, the mayor submitted this proposal for us to review, and I ask this go into subcommittee for further review.
Okay, we will be sending this to Ways and Means, and the Ways and Means Committee will meet Wednesday night at 7:00 PM. Okay, Judge? Any other suspensions while we're here? No? Okay, return to regular order of business, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so order.
Calendar item number one, hearing called is ordered upon the application of Boston Wellness Association, Inc., for a special permit to operate a medical marijuana treatment center within the TED district at 44 Railroad Street, Revere, Mass.
Are there any proponents who's speaking on behalf? Oh, I didn't think you were coming tonight, Councillor. Get to the mic before you say something. Just want to remind everybody that this will be going into subcommittee, into zoning subcommittee, and that will be held on Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM, am I correct, Mr. Chairman?
You are correct, sir.
Thank you. So, want to remind, we're not going to get into super, super details tonight. You make your case at the zoning subcommittee, and then hopefully we'll bring it out next week. I know you will, time's up.
Going forward there, Judge Badde. Mr. President, honorable members of the Revere City Council. It's the first time I've done this.
Do you want a podium there?
No, I don't need a lift.
Stand on it? No, okay.
Thank you, thank you for the...
No shot jokes tonight, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Attorney Lawrence Simeoni, 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. This evening, I'll be representing the applicant, Boston Wellness Association. Boston Wellness is a nonprofit organization in accordance with General Laws 180, Section 4. It has a principal place of business at 200 Broadway, Lynn Field, Massachusetts. Under the Department of Public Health registration process for medical marijuana treatment centers, Boston Wellness Association on August 22nd, 2013 filed its Phase 1 application. It is now ready and poised to file its November 21st, 13, Phase 2 application. Joining me tonight is Richard P. Bennett, Corporate Counsel to Boston Wellness, who is assisting the nonprofit organization through the registration process. This evening, Mr. President, and members of the council, I'd like to just discuss briefly the applicant and the members of this nonprofit board. This board brings a cross-section of representation and experience to this particular project. From public sector, law enforcement, education, administration, and the private sector, this board covers the entire venue. The President, Matthew T. Philbin. Matt is no stranger to our community. He's the owner and operator of the Roadway Motel. In short, Matt's legacy here in the city is for community involvement, and he offers the best the private sector has to offer because he seeks to have Revere prosper and to increase the quality of life for the citizens in this community. Matt is joined by Kathleen F. Donovan, an educator. Ms. Donovan has been the superintendent of schools for four communities, City of Everett, Town of Arlington, York, Maine. She's also been the superintendent of Pope John's High School. Her wealth of knowledge in the area of education strengthens this board and its overall purpose, which is not just to manufacture medical marijuana products, but to advise, counsel, and work with qualifying, qualified patients as they seek much-needed medical treatment. The board also has the presence of Sheriff, former sheriff of Worcester County, Guy Galaudis. Guy is illustrious and long public service to this Commonwealth and to that county. He's without question steeped in experience both in law enforcement and public sector regulations. He will add to the board oversight of lawful enforcement of legal regulations under the Department of Public Health guidelines, as well as dispensary security. These will be his oversight and certainly contributions made to the board. And last but not least, I have Jeanne Jones. Her experience is in human resources and administration. Ms. Jones brings with her this administrative experience, which she will use as she works for the nonprofit agency if properly registered and approved by this board. But it's her personal experience that brings her a special part to the table. She is, as many of us know, a person who has suffered from cancer. She is a cancer survivor. She was treated with medical marijuana over 10 years ago, when it was in the experimental stage. Her experience will round out this panel of individuals who seek this particular project. And it's for Ms. Jones and people like her that we stand before this honorable council in order not just to manufacture a product, but to assist those with debilitating medical conditions and who suffer on a daily basis. The City of Revere established a zoning law, Mr. President, and they did so subsequent to the new act that was approved by the legislature in November 6th, 2012. The act followed the ballot initiative number three in 2012. The initiative clearly established 63.3% of the citizens of Massachusetts favored the humanitarian use of medical marijuana. The new act, Chapter 369 of 2012, is entitled "An Act for the Humanitarian Medical Use of Marijuana." The law establishes that one medical marijuana treatment center shall be located in each county and no greater than five in said county, that there will be five medical marijuana treatment centers to be registered statewide. The model they use is similar to New Jersey. It's a very strict model, and it's not as liberal as those of communities and states out West. The law was given an effective date of January 1st, 2013. The Department of Public Health has submitted and promulgated regulations under 105 CMR The new law, in brief, essentially decriminalizes medical marijuana use for those registered under the statute. It allows a qualified patient to receive a written certificate from a registered physician who has a bona fide patient-physician relationship. That physician must establish that the individual patient has a debilitating medical condition, as said condition is established, under the statute and under the regulations. Such conditions as established under the regulations are cancer, glaucoma, AIDS, ALS, Crohn's disease, Parkinson's disease, multiple sclerosis, and other conditions as determined in writing by the qualified patient's physician. The physician must also, before he issues his written certificate, establish that, in his medical opinion, that the use and benefits afforded the patient by medical marijuana outweigh any risk to that patient or health. A qualified patient is entitled to go to a registered medical marijuana treatment center and receive a 60-day supply. The 60-day supply will be either a marijuana product or a marijuana-infused product. They refer to them as MIPs. These could be edibles, ointments, or salves. The regulation, as determined by the Department of Public Health, 105 CMR 725-004, has established that the quantity that the patient shall be allowed will not exceed 10 ounces. It also establishes that the medical marijuana treatment center must be a nonprofit. It must establish operating procedures for storage and cultivation. It must identify one location in addition to the location it presents to a local board. And any dispensary agent, anybody working for the medical marijuana treatment center, or as determined in the regulation, a registered marijuana dispensary, they must be evaluated by the Department of Public Health with a query check. If any individual, whether it be board member, staff volunteer, cultivation specialist, security guard, be found to have been convicted of a felony on a drug offense, they will be denied dispensary agent status. This evening, Mr. President, the Boston Wellness Association seeks a special permit in accordance with Revere Revised Zoning Ordinance 1716040, allowing the establishment and operation of medical marijuana treatment center as defined under the Statute 94(c) and the regulations cited. That some operation will be allowed in the technological enterprise district as established under the zoning map of the City of Revere and its zoning atlas. The new law, as established by this honorable body in October of this year, established that the definition of medical marijuana treatment center would be the same as set forth in the statute and in the regulations. It further allows a medical marijuana treatment center or a registered marijuana dispensary, an RMD, to operate in the TED district subject to a special permit granted by this honorable body. It is subject to one particular limitation, and that is no such dispensary or treatment center be located 400 feet from any residential use, school, building, and structures for religious purposes, public schools, or areas of critical environmental concern, ACCs. The property that has been chosen by Boston Wellness Center and here in the City of Revere is 44 Railroad Street. The locus is approximately 2.3 acres, 100 and 2,150 square feet, with 100-foot frontage on Railroad Street. The property is improved by two commercial structures, built approximately in the 1950s. Building A, as you see on the site plan, is 11,700 square feet. Building B is 21,900 square feet, giving a total of 33,680 square feet of buildable space for the medical marijuana treatment center. The maximum principal building coverage in the TED district is 50%, and the existing facilities and buildings on premises cover only 33%. This is a non-conforming structure where it fails to meet the current dimensional controls under the TED district, and so it is a non-conforming structure as set forth in Revere Revised Zoning Ordinance 1708530. The project, as set forth by the applicant before you, Mr. President, is to take these two buildings and to renovate them to the tune of about $4.1 million. These renovations will be exterior renovations and interior renovations. The exterior renovations will bring up to code handicap access ramps to the retail facility that will be located on the premises. It will also establish repairs to the roof and siding of the structure. The interior renovation will develop the medical marijuana treatment center, a retail store of 2,500 square feet, an office of 2,000 square feet. On the second building, Building B, they seek to put a mezzanine in, which will add to the total square footage of warehouse space being 39,700 square feet. It is anticipated that the hours of operation will be 24/7 at this facility because you will have security staff, cultivation staff at various times. But its retail store will only be available to the public around 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. As you can see by the board to my right, there are two gates. The first gate will be open and available for public access to the retail store for qualified patients and qualified caregivers, those that assist patients under the act. The second fence will establish total security of the rear portion of the property with no public access. We anticipate the staffing levels to be initial of 25 people and will grow to 60 people as the project moves forward. Boston Wellness Association has met with a variety of... Oh, sorry. Boston Wellness Association has met with a variety of the city's officials. We have met with the Fire Department Chief through Site Plan Review, and he has reviewed the project. We have met with the Revere Police Chief informally, Mr. Philbin met during the early part of the selection of this particular site on behalf of Boston Wellness. Mr. Philbin, myself, met with Nick Catnazo, the Board of Health Agent and Director of Inspetural Services. And the board and Mr. Philbin have met with Suffolk County Sheriff, Tompkins. The project has also been reviewed by the Site Plan Review Committee, both in the screening process and recommendations. At this time, Mr. President, I would like to introduce Jim Dean. He's the architect that will go through briefly the schematics that are to my far right, and we will be available to answer any questions. What I do want to say, as Mr. Dean is making his way to the podium, is that it is our intention to further our presentation in subcommittee. Boston Wellness has requested the appearance at subcommittee of two of its consultants, Adam Berman from California. Mr. Berman's history is he's done and managed 100 dispensaries, opened 100 dispensaries and managed them. He will speak to the issue of operation, cultivation, products, impacts on the community, and the benefits of medical marijuana. He will do that Wednesday night at 6:00. We will also see Consultant Major Eric Brogan from Fort Lauderdale Police, who's worked with the DEA, Drug Enforcement. And as always, we will have Sheriff Guy Galaudis there to talk about dispensary security. The issues that we will touch on are the issues that I know concern you. These will be registrations issues, dispensary security, inventory control, transportation of the product. These are the issues we will talk about in subcommittee as they are developed through the regulations. It is my intention to submit to each city council a copy of the regulations promulgated by the Department of Public Health, so that you will have them before that meeting, and also to provide you resumes of the consultants. We will also be able to discuss the Site Plan Review recommendations, and then any conditions the subcommittee would like to place on the project, if any. I'd like to introduce Jim Dean.
Councillor, excuse me. We don't want to go this far with this. I want to leave this in subcommittee, so...
You want to go to committee?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Please. Because we have another hearing we have to go through and a couple other things. Yeah, we still have to go through other proponents, any opponents, so I prefer not to. I've given you a lot of latitude as it is.
I appreciate that, Mr. President. Mr. President, should either the public or any member want to ask questions about the facility, we'll be available to answer questions, and Mr. Dean will be with me.
Thank you. Are there any other opponent, proponents? Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Councillors, as we stated, we'll be going into committee on this, and I'm sure it'll be a very detailed subcommittee based on what I've heard around and the presentations you want to make. So, that's it for now. We'll close this hearing, and we'll continue into subcommittee.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered upon the application presented by M.D.M. Raham for a permit to install an awning at premises located at 136 Shirley Ave.
Sir, how are you? You want your name and address for the record, please.
How are you doing? My name is Louis Francis, and I'm the contractor of the awning. My company's name is Francis Signs in Lynn, Massachusetts.
Okay.
I'm here in case any of you guys have a question on how the awning is constructed.
Is the owner here?
Yes.
You are Eric?
Yes.
Okay, cool. You want to... We can vote on it tonight. How long have you been putting awnings up in Revere?
In Revere?
Yeah.
Well, we've been in the City of Lynn since 1989.
Have you put any in Revere?
Yes.
You have?
You have.
Have you ever come up here before?
Not for a hearing, because the awnings that I have put in Revere hasn't exceeded the square foot limit.
Well, that's not the issue with awnings. Awnings are different. Signs are different than awnings. Anytime you need an awning, you have to come before us. Bottom line.
I understand, I didn't know that.
Bottom line. That's why you're here tonight, because it happens to be around the corner from my house, and I saw you putting it up.
Okay.
That's why you're here tonight, because there's a liability issue here, because if that awning falls, the city is responsible for allowing you to keep it up there. So, that's why you had to get a bond?
Yeah.
So, exactly. So, that's why I have you up here tonight. So, I would advise you that any further awnings that you put up, you have to get a permit, and you have to come see this young lady for paperwork and to come before us.
Can I ask my father? He's the actual owner, and if I could ask him if he actually had come to a hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, he hasn't came up here himself, but he had met with the building department and said, you know, and sat on the table with a couple of the guys.
Okay, well, the ruling is that if there's no awning up, you have to come before us. If you're replacing an existing awning, you don't have to come before us, you just have to pull a permit. Okay, just for your future edification. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, go ahead, Councillor.
Mr. President, I'm down there quite a bit, and I think what they've done down there is an asset to the city without question. Okay, it looks good, it's clean, and when the vote comes up, I'll be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councillor Guanasso.
Mr. President, I note the height above sidewalk is listed as 10 feet. What's our city ordinance? 10. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and may I say, the sign looks terrific. I'm glad that it's lit up. You know, it really brightens up the corner. You did a nice job inside the building. You know, I've been in there several times. I've been in there before, you know. You know, we welcome you to the neighborhood, you know, but we just want to make sure things are done correctly, okay, for people's protections. Okay, so, we're going to vote on this now, so you won't have to wait, we'll get it out of the way, because we know you already put it up. So...
Yeah, I was asking them to make sure we got the party from the city. I think that...
Okay, well, now you know the rules. Okay, now you guys know the rules.
Next month, I'm going to come for another one. 3:00, 7:00 finished here.
Okay.
And one problem left, we got a blue light outside.
Gotcha.
The city's safe.
Okay, with that, hearing no other comments, ladies and gentlemen, I have asked that we vote on this and that we vote on it affirmative, and all in favor? Yeah, are there any opposed? I'm sorry. Public hearing? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Vote and so order.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good life, my friends.
Calendar item number three, communication from Site Plan Review Committee relative to the findings and conditions for a C1319 Medical Marijuana Treatment Center application.
Attach that, too. I think there's another one at the end, too, so we can attach that. An old one that came up.
Calendar item number four, communication from the Election Commissioner relative to the special state election to be held in the City of Revere on December 10th, 2013.
Place on file.
Calendar item number five, communication from the Board of Assessors requesting a public hearing for the purpose of establishing the minimum residential factor for fiscal year 2014.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this will be brought up after we have the hearing for the minimum residential factor. Put it on the table. I'm sorry, five is at a public hearing. Six will be placed on the table until after we vote on the public hearing. Next week. Public hearings next week.
Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Councillor Powers that the mayor request the Mass Highway Department to repaint the crosswalks at the intersection of Oak Island Street and 1A North Shore Road.
Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, having been down there the past couple of weeks in that neighborhood, I can't believe the condition of the crosswalks. And it's particularly, you know, concerning because many of the residents, the elderly residents that live in that area, particularly over in the Jack Zata House, they cross over there to that convenience store quite dearly. And the crosswalks, they really need to be painted and corrected, because, God forbid, I wouldn't want to see anybody get hurt down there because somebody, some motorists couldn't see a crosswalk. So, I hope the mayor will direct this communication to Mass Highway, and it'll be resolved very quickly, before the call weather gets in. Thank you.
Councillor, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I want to support Councillor Powers in this motion. I drive down that road almost every day when I go to school at Salem State, and cars go fast in that area, so it definitely is an area that we need people to be aware that there's a crosswalk there, because I can tell you, there are a lot of times you can't see people, especially if it's at night. So, to have that done and with that reflective paint would be an asset in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Any other councillors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote and so order.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Councillor Patch that the city council order the city treasurer to reimburse within 21 days any police officer who has worked in assigned detail on any community development project. It has come to the attention of Councillor Patch that police officers have worked on community development job sites, and in some instances have had to wait several months to be paid for work performed. The city council should further direct the city treasurer to maintain the detail fund at $75,000 as required by the agreement between the city and the police department.
Councillor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I had a conversation yesterday with the chief. I think they're very close to an agreement with the treasurer and the mayor to straighten this out, but I wanted to keep the motion in and... this out, but I wanted to keep the motion in in case, in case something, it didn't develop. There's no reason that anybody should wait seven months to be paid for a detail. When, it doesn't happen within the utilities. So, the rest of the motion, I believe speaks for itself. Thank you.
Any other comments, counselors? Hearing then. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Voting so ordered.
Calendar item, calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Nowosowski that the mayor requests the Election Commissioner to include copies of Section 9.12.030 of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to the posting of political signs in the packets for all candidates of all political offices, including city, state, Suffolk County, and federal positions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I just want to remind the counselors, I know we have two motions coming up and I don't want to get co-mingled the two. So, you know, I know Counselor Guanasso has his motion afterwards, so I want to stick to letting the Election Commission hand out these ordinances in our packets that we normally get when we pull our papers and also that we, and I want to amend it just that we send a copy to the Secretary of State's office for their distribution also and to advise all statewide candidates. And I know a lot of the candidates, and I'd say even some of the Revere candidates, knew of the, of the ordinance, but they didn't know the details, because I was always getting calls, what about this section? What about that section? They should have it in their hands and everybody should know what it is. We have, we spent a lot of time on this several years ago, because before, the ordinance was only one line and they had no meat to it at all. And we established guidelines for it. And unfortunately, there was no, and I didn't want to go with this, but there was no enforcement on the seeing some of these properties, which I know is going to be mentioned in a few minutes on the next motion. But people have to know, even though knowledge is no excuse for violating the city ordinances or laws. But I would ask that we at least start giving these out to all candidates and let the Secretary of State advise all the statewide candidates and the Suffolk County candidates what our rules are. I know Winthrop does and they're very strict with it in Winthrop. So, I think we should also be. So, anybody else on this particular motion?
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Voting so ordered. Thank you very much.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the Revere City Council Go On Record is opposing political signage for candidates in ballot questions in future elections in the city of Revere. Further, that the City Council develop a ladies and gentlemen's agreement with regards to posting political signs in future elections.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President.
Here we go.
We're all well aware of First Amendment rights, which allows us to put up signage anywhere we want and we are understanding of that. But this past election, and in the past few elections, the signages all over our community placing one neighbor against another, friends who have been neighbors for years disliking one another because of these foolish signs. There's so many vehicles out there that political candidates can use to enhance their candidacy without putting the signs all over the place. Now I know the nature of the beast is the first one that puts it up, well, then I have to do it too. And I recognize that. I was very lucky enough not to have an opponent, but I did meet with several people throughout this past campaign and I spoke to many people and they were disgusted about the whole thing, based on the fact that I, they say, I don't want to put this sign in front of my home, but Joe Smoak came to me and asked me so. I didn't want to offend my neighbor to the right and to the left, but my friend asked me to. So, here I am, pitted one against the other and making for a, not only an unsightly, we talk about aesthetic value up here on a, every month that we meet. What aesthetic value does this enhance, anything? I know, and in fact, it does a, it's a deterrent to people wanting to run for office that say, gee, is this the way I have to do it? Whatever happened to the old fashioned way of knocking on the door, sending out literature? This is all politically acceptable. But to see the signage throughout our community and this year snow topped it all off. And there has been, and you got businesses involved that have absolutely no condition within our community. Some of these businesses are leased out, they live elsewhere. A friend of them asked them to put a sign on it, so they put these unsightly signs on there. We have to live here. This is what we live with. And all these people go out, they drive their vehicles to another location and they live in a community that don't have these signs. I remember dating myself in the late 60s and early 70s and the 80s, traversing through East Boston as I went to work at Mass General and I'm saying, wow, this is awful, the signage all over the place. I mean, I hope it never comes to our community. And it was there initially, we had some, but then we went back into it. We had a ladies and gentlemen agreement that worked for years, but then we fell victim to this thing again. And I think if we put this, what I'm going to like to do is put this in, want to make it politically correct, put it on the ballot. Have a ballot question. Do you want to see political signs throughout our community anymore? And what I would like to do is have the Election Commission in partnership with the City Council work up a, a particular ordinance or a question for a ballot question to say if in fact the people want it. My neighbors don't want it. The people I spoke with don't want it. I don't know of one person I spoke to says, I think this is a good idea. I think there's so many more vehicles out there, especially with today's technology. You don't have to plaques, put all these plackets all over the place. And I just think that we have so many tools to work with. Why not use them? And they don't, they don't place one neighbor against another. And I just offer this out and I know it's a political snowball and it's something that people might not abide by, but I think we have to denounce that. We have to let them sign something before, sign this ladies and gentlemen's agreement before they get their packet. If they want to sign it, they can, but if they better abide by it, because the people will know about it. So, I offer it out as a, as a tool to clean up our city and no more of this pitting one neighbor against another because of their political positions.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mr. President. In this past election, there was without question many, many signs on homes and businesses. Some of them had six to seven signs, which is against our city ordinance. I would really like to see we eliminate it all. I mean, I was fortunate I had no signs, all right? Fortunate, all right? My colleagues had signs in every location that you would fathom. You look at the length, the largeness of the signs, all right? I would really get back to it. We're talking about building up Revere and anyone goes by Revere and sees this, the magnitude of the signs out there, I think it's ridiculous. I really do. And the way to build up Revere, keep the quality of life going, will have no signs. Everyone knows an election on that particular date. So, matter of fact, as of today, there's still two candidates who have not removed the signs throughout the community that's against the city rules and regulations, okay? We have no enforcement. That's the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimbudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I certainly agree with my colleague from Ward 3. And I said this on election night, you know, I participated in this sign war, but I felt dirty. The city looked like Lynn. But when there were hundreds of signs out there, I felt I had to show people that I wanted, that I wanted to be reelected, so I jumped into this sign war. I would go for this, certainly go for this ladies and gentlemen agreement. However, we have to think about that, because it takes ladies and gentlemen. We have to actually agree to this and stick to it. Now, we did for a long time and I know, Mr. President, you put in us a lot of work on the sign ordinance and it actually worked for several years. I think we didn't have any overplay of signs. There wasn't, it wasn't unsightly to drive up and down every street, but this election it certainly was. And I'm as guilty as anybody else, because I participated in it. And like I said, it didn't feel good and I don't want to be Lynn. I want to be Revere and I want to be the new Revere, the Revere with the better image of, of this half a billion dollar project on Revere Beach and the good stuff that's coming to Revere. And we don't want to go back to the old ways when there was chaos. So, I, I hope we can get this done and I certainly support my colleague from Ward 3 and I know I'll sign on the dotted line and I hope everybody else will. Thank you.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Well, I feel like, like every issue that's come across, you know, there are pros and cons and I have a lot of different ideas about this issue. I agree with a lot of my colleagues and I think it can get tough with neighbors and stuff like that. And I think that there are also a lot of pros to it. Look at the turnout at this election. Look at how many people in Revere were excited to vote in this election. I think that it's patriotic. I think it shows support and I think it gets the community excited. You know, I feel like there was so much energy in the city of Revere this November and the end of this September, you know? People were talking, people were going out talking to their neighbors, people were having these conversations that they haven't had in a while. And I'm proud to see that in our community and I'm proud to see this morale back, you know? Is there overkill sometimes? Absolutely. You know, is that something we want to see all the time? No. Do we want to see neighbors going against each other? No. But everyone's not going to agree on everything. And people should have a right to say what they feel like saying. And I believe that the voter turnout and the energy that our community had and the enthusiasm and the support is something that I was proud of, you know? To see so many people be willing to put their name on the line, because when you put something in front of your house, that is you. You know, you're speaking for yourself and for your own opinion and that takes a lot of guts and that takes a lot of opinion. And I respect that people were that patriotic and that excited and that into it, because our voting numbers have been awful. People don't want to vote. People don't care. And this year, we saw something different and I want to continue to see that. I want people to be educated on what they're voting on and who they're voting on. You know, if anything, if we're going to talk about issues like this, I think knocking on doors should come up. That's tacky. I don't want to be sitting down with my family when I'm home for four hours a day having dinner and have someone knock on my door. So, if we're going to add that, I think we should add that into the motion. And I also think that we should also look into, if people are going door to door, they should be checking in with the police department as if vendors do in scheduling where they're going and when they're going and registering, because if we're going to be ladies and gentlemen about it, we're going to follow our city ordinances and that is the proper way to handle ourselves when talking about residents. But I'm not knocking it and I'm not saying that's a bad motion, because we all agree that there is overkill and that it can be tacky. But we can't just look at all the negative things. We have to look at both sides and that's just what I'm trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I do agree to some extent with the motion, but I also agree with the comments made by Counsel Vice President Giannino. We did. If you look at the numbers, I know we had the largest turnout in this city in the past four or six elections. It was a great turnout.
It was at the casino.
And people came out. And I don't think it was just because of the casino. I think it was because people are out there campaigning. I can tell you now that I had at least 18 people call me and ask me if I could, if I wanted to put a sign on their lawn, small signs. And I think that's fine. I mean, we talk about Winthrop and they do it everywhere that I can see. I drive up to Wakefield, Redding, all those places on weekends and, you know, they're little towns. They use signs up there. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. And as far as people taking down their signs, I can say right now that within two days after the election, every one of my signs was down with the exception of three and those three had thank yous on them and they were left up for six days, which is within compliance with the ordinance we have now, Mr. President. So, I don't know where we're going with this. I'll work with anybody with regards to it, but I think we shouldn't be infringing on people's rights to advertise or display the person that they support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else before I get back to Counselor Guanasso? Counselor Ritten?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Guanasso and I have had some discussions about this privately and we, I respectfully disagree with him, but I appreciate his input on this. And he's wrong about one thing. We, we don't allow people to put any signs up anywhere. We actually control what kind of signs can be put on buildings in this community. But when it comes to political signs, we're treading on a very sacred area. Political speech is the highest of our protected speeches, our speech protected by the Constitution. When we start telling people who they can or cannot support in any way, shape, or form, we are treading on our most sacred tenet of our government, our democratic government, and that's the right to elect whoever we want and choose whatever issues, side of every issues we want. So, I would be very much opposed to this. Unfortunately, and I couldn't agree with him more, it does look shabby. No question about it. If you think Revere is bad, drive through Everett sometime, as I used to when I, when I worked there. And Everett is, is, is got to be the zenith of political signs. Virtually everyone in Everett has a sign on their front lawn or their house. And I don't doubt that it's shabby. There's no question about it. Unfortunately, in a democratic society, we need to accept a certain amount of shabbiness in order to promote our democratic views and our, and our right to be heard. And this is of primary importance in our society. One other issue I will address is the issue of the neighbor versus neighbor situation. And this is reflective in a way, a microcosm of what, what goes on in Washington these days. The, the problem of people disparaging their neighbors because of their political beliefs is becoming a huge, huge issue. And in our community, as in any community, when one neighbor likes one candidate or one issue or another, that, that choice should be respected and he should not be vilified or hated or, or taken to task by his neighbor simply because of his political choices. And if we keep going down this road where we take personal everybody's political beliefs, we are creating a situation that is absolutely intolerable. The election's over, the candidates of one have won. It's time to sit back and allow them to do their job. We voted on an issue, the casino issue. We don't know whether that's going to come up, come out, but we voted on it and we let our thoughts be known to everybody in the world. Now it's time to see what is to be done about it. And, and we need to respect the fact that the people who voted, voted the way they did, made the choices they did and supported the people that they did. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Arigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be quick. Counselor Ritten did hit the nail on the head on what I was going to say about our freedom of speech and the ability for us to represent who we like and who we don't like, maybe. But I do think that there is a certain quality of life issue when so many signs, and I think it was an anomaly this year with the casino question and the amount of money that was spent this year in, you know, basically municipal election, that it, it does get to a quality of life issue. And I would be, you know, I would be in favor of a, of a ladies and gentlemen's agreement. I don't know how much that would actually hold up, but I think, I think that part of this, of this motion is something that I could support. But at the end of the day, we are talking about people's rights and we, as, as Counsel Ritten eloquently stated, we are, you know, walking a fine line. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, do you want your one minute or you want me to go for my three?
I just want one minute, Mr. President.
That's all I'm going to give you, is one minute.
I know my Counselor from Ward 4, my dear friend from Ward 4, Representative of the American Senate. American Civil Liberties Union. And I can applaud that and wish them all well because they're all great humanitarians. But don't kid our public and don't kid our community by saying that the signages brought the people out. Yes, no questions brought the people out. And we had enough exposure in the local media and TVs, the proper sources to bring these issues to a position where people can make an educated decision. But don't make any mistake about it. The signages did absolutely nothing to increase the amount of... And with the amount of campaigns that I've been involved for myself and for other individuals, and quite a few of them were conducted without signage, and we had a tremendous turnout. I just think that's the lack of interest in a lot of issues, and it's not the signages that bring out people. And in this particular case, we had two things. We had one fortunate thing is we didn't have a mayoral contest, so obviously that brings out more people. People have an unbelievable history of how they vote. So thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway, but I applaud the American Civil Liberties Union tonight in all their wisdom.
Thank you very much. Well, now I guess I'm going to have my piece. A lot, you know, I agree with a lot that everybody said tonight. Was it a mess? Not totally. You had a couple hotspots that everybody thought was a good location. And I don't mind saying it, the check cashing place, a bell circle. You had nine candidates up there, including the question. Because that's considered a candidate. And that was a mess. You had, you know, one house near the high school. It was a disaster, private house. You had one on Broadway near the Dairy Queen. It was a disaster. Enforcement and control, we have that, ladies and gentlemen. We have it in our books. We worked for it. I don't agree with a ladies and gentlemen agreement. And I've been on the council for 14 years. I've never been asked once to sign one or be a part of one. And the question signs were all over the place. And, you know, I supported them, but some of the locations they put them were not legitimate locations. They were in residential neighborhoods, large ones, four by eights. We know that's wrong. We have three departments that enforce. The Election Commission, Inspection Services, and the Police Department can all enforce it. The Election Commission calls the zoning police, as I call them, which is the building inspector. He enforces our zoning rules. He is supposed to give the tickets or the citations to the homeowner, not to the candidates. So this home that had seven candidates on it, it's the homeowner that gets it, not any of the candidates. So I want you to remember that. We go through this three months, for three months, every two years. Again, we're saying our piece, First Amendment, it's been noted. I don't see anything wrong with it. I didn't have super large signs. I had lawn signs. That's all I put out. It's a nature of the beast. Talk about chaos, Counselor. Yeah, in those locations, there was chaos. But everybody else had either one or two signs, which is legitimate. It's not a bad thing. We are the violators in general. I'm not picking on anybody special. We are the violators. People that come into our city don't know our rules, and I'm trying to correct that. They would be the violators. You had a congressional race with signs all over the city for a primary several weeks ago, and you got another one coming up, and that's not as bad so far. But it got bad. You go into these other cities and towns that were mentioned. I go into Winthrop, Everett, Malden, Chelsea, Lynn, and Swamsgate, they all had them. In Salem, they had them. They're everywhere. It's a nature of the beast. The key thing is the control, which we have the peace to do it in our ordinance, and we need the enforcement. So that's my say. I won't agree with this motion. I will vote against it. And I would consider putting it into legislative affairs, but it would die just because it's the end of the year. Let's vote on it, say our piece, and get it done. So roll call, please.
Roll call on the motion. Counselor Rigo.
No.
No. Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Giannino.
No.
No. Counselor Gwinasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Patch.
No.
No. Counselor Penta.
No.
No. Counselor Powers.
No.
No. Counselor Riordan.
No.
No. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor President Novoselfsky.
No.
No. The motion fails.
Mr. President.
Counselor Patch.
Could I ask to suspend the rules, please? I want to, I would like to speak on that late communication that was rushed through here at the beginning of the meeting. For what reason, I don't know why it was...
Well, it was done for Mr., the department head, who is here. We always take them up first.
What department?
When Judge Anzoni was here, was here on behalf of that and the residential...
Well, I just have something...
But, you know, we're at the end of the session anyways. You say your piece, Counselor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway here. First of all, I'd like to say that I had the good fortune of negotiating police contracts with three good mayors, Mayor Calolo, Mayor Haas, and Mayor Ambazzino. And I negotiated many contracts with these three mayors. And if my colleagues understand that the process goes that the mayor, I'm sure I don't have to explain it to Counselor Haas, that the... It's not fun negotiating a contract. It goes on, and this particular last one, these two unions, the Superior Officers Union and the Patrolman's Union, have been without a contract for several years. They had some very hard negotiations, and I also went through some hard negotiations. But once you come to a compromise and you negotiate and you come to an agreement, I can never remember a council that didn't vote for the agreement or put it into a committee. We have actually nothing to say about the negotiations. The money's already been appropriated. So I see no, I can't understand what is the reason of putting it in a ways or means? We can't, we're not part of the negotiation agreement. All we can do is approve, you can even vote yes or no, on what came as an agreement through the negotiations between the mayor and the two unions. These people are waiting for an agreement. I don't think they should have to wait any longer. Unfortunately, the mayor couldn't come to an agreement with the fire department, and that's going to arbitration. So it hasn't been an easy negotiation here. So again, what is the purpose of sending it to ways or means? Can I get an answer, Mr. President?
Anybody else want to... The chairman of ways or means.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would answer that, but with another question in saying, what's the purpose of having a committee if we're not going to look at issues that come up before the council? Especially an issue that comes up late to the council. So I think we would be doing our due diligence by looking at exactly what the package is and talking about it and understanding it fully. I think anyone who doesn't want to do that is doing a disservice to the community. Thank you.
Can I reply on that?
You know, there's some other councils that want to comment on it, say reply on it. Save all your replies. Counselor Ri...
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Counselor Rigo. First of all, that's what we're here for. We're here to consider these things. We're here, especially expenditures. We're here to ask questions about them. We're here to make the public realize the good points and if there are bad points. It's just as important that the public hear why, the good reasons why we're doing this as reasons that they may not think are that good. And I hear you, Counselor Patch. The administration has the job of negotiating these contracts, but we have the job of approving them. And so that's why we're here. And in order to approve them, you know, we need more than just a piece of paper saying, well, we did this, we did that, and we're going to do this. We need to ask the relevant questions. That's why we have a subcommittee. That's why we have medical marijuana going to the zoning subcommittee so we can ask the pertinent questions. People can hopefully tune in or come here and watch them. But whether they do or they don't, it's still our job to make it available to them. And I hate to keep harping on the democratic process, but that's what this is. Thank you.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I sympathize with my good friend, Counselor Patch, and I do understand negotiations, and I do understand that they get heated, and it's very stressful, and it's a long way to get there. And it's nice to, once you reach an agreement, to just push it through. However, you know, I'm the guy that several years ago put in that if we ever expend more than $5,000 at a time on this council, it requires a financial analysis. This is a substantial amount of money. We need to at least look at it and understand where the negotiations, how they were reached. And I'm sure that it's going to be approved, but there is a process, and we have to go through it. Thank you.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Patch because I know how much that they've went through trying to do these negotiations. I understand how hard that is. But also, something that affects me with this is that it's a late communication. And I'm really getting tired of seeing things here that could be addressed on time as late communications. And I feel like it gives a bad impression, like these issues are being rushed through. So not only is it late, but now we have two days' notice that it's going to be on Wednesday night. So I think that as important as this is and as quickly as we want this addressed for our police department, it's kind of being done about a little tricky, and I wish that it wasn't rushed through so quick. Thank you.
Counselor Gwinasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. As exactly was going to refer to, the late communication. And in fact, we're not going to delay anything very much. We're meeting on Wednesday evening, which is two days, and then we're going to vote on it next Monday evening. And I think what it does is, I think we all swore to transparency at the beginning of our elective years. So this is transparency. This has given other individuals an opportunity to view what they negotiated. If we, in fact, voted it through tonight, all I had before me was a late communication. I didn't have any, I don't even know how much it's going to cost, what the value of this package is going to be, and what it means to our community. All it was was a two-sentence late communication. And I have no objection about it going through the process of going to a subcommittee, because that's why this body established subcommittees, to give the opportunity for other individuals to understand what we're voting up or voting down. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that process. So I understand Counselor Patch's concern for the police department, and we all are, and we want to make sure this happens. But this is only, we're only asking for a couple of days, and we'll vote it up or down on next Monday, so it's only a week. So I have no objection to the process that was done today.
Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will go to the defense of my friend, Charles Patch. The late communication came up here, and it's so brief, you can read it in about 30 seconds. And it does have the wages for 2012, 2013, 7/13, half a year, and 2014. It's very clear, and it's very... At one point, the Counselor Patch brought up, he's never seen his voted down once in probably the last 35 years he's been on the police force. And some things don't have to go to committee. We've seen them send everything to committee just to set up a committee. And I honestly am one person that doesn't believe a lot of this has to go to committee and bog down committees and, you know, rule morale, people looking out there for three, four years without a pay raise. They're getting 1% in 2012, 1% the first six months of 2013, 2.5%. I mean, across this country, people are getting 2%, 3%, 4%. Then 2014 was a 4.5%. You know, I like to see what happens in committee and see anything that's changed on this, because I'd bear it different with anybody up here that you're going to see it. The mayor sets this whole union issue. We don't have any say in the matter. It's the mayor against the unions. The treasurer was up here earlier. Not one question was asked by anybody up here. So if everybody had any questions for the, that was the time to ask them. He was up here. So you're going to have him come up here again Wednesday. I mean, these people have other things to do with their life also. So just to send stuff to committee, I agree with Counselor Patch, and I don't have a problem voting on this tonight, but if you want to send it to committee, it seems like the votes are there to do that. But there's a lot of stuff that goes to committee that does not have to go there.
Point of information, Mr. President.
What's your point?
The treasurer asked me personally if we could hear it first so he could leave.
I understand that. That's not my point. My point is he was up here.
Counselor, there's no cross-talk, please.
It was done on his behalf.
I had the floor, Mr. President.
Counselor, he got a point of information, and he has, and you're interrupting him. So bear with me. Are you through, Counselor? Now what's your floor?
The information he's talking about, apples and oranges here. He took it out of turn because the treasurer was here. My point is not a person asked him a question. I didn't have a problem taking it out of turn. That was the right thing to do. But not a person asked him one question. As the Counselor Patch is defending, why don't we ask a question if we had so many? I looked this over in 30 seconds. You can see exactly what it is in black and white. It's not a communication of one line. It's to highlight bullet points exactly what this contract is. So all Counselor Patch is trying to do is be fair to the police officer who went two or three years without a contract, saying, hey, we're by with the mayor, and you people agreed it. You know, I think unfortunately, you want to go to committee on it, it's all well and good, but the numbers are still the numbers at the end of the day, and you're going to vote on the same thing that you're going to vote on tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I completely agree with Counselor Patch and Counselor Penta, but I think the issue here is the way it was put in. It was put in late. And we keep getting these things put in late. And what precedent are we setting by voting on late communications constantly? If they were put in on a timely matter, on, you know, with our rules and regulations, it would make more sense. But if we're going to be sticklers about rules, let's stop putting things in late, get them in right. And then I would have no problem voting on it if it was on the regular agenda, but I found out about it five minutes before the meeting. Thank you.
Mayor, can I have a point of information? Point of information, also, we have late motions from every council up here at any given time. Our rules say you're not supposed to, what are supposed to lay on the table a week. We vote them. We vote them every single night they're up here. So if you're going to follow one rule, follow them all.
Those are if approved by the council, and they open up the door for the late motions. Okay? Let me say this, okay? And then I'll let Counselor Patch go. Okay? Number one, I support our offices, both groups. You know, I think they do a hard job. They have a difficult job, just like our fire department does. But yes, this came in tonight. I didn't get a chance to read it because I'm running the meeting. I don't have time to read it while it's going on. You folks do. I don't know what I'm voting on. I want to see what I'm voting on. And, you know, this is not an emergency-type thing. They've been waiting for how long, Counselor? For two years for a contract? How many?
I think it's like three or four.
Three or four years. What is the difference for one week that we can all sit down, talk about it, make sure it's the right way to go? The mayor didn't even know what was in this as of last Friday. I was in the office. They were asking me for a late communication about putting it in, but I never got to see the contract at that time. But somebody's lateness, as far as I'm concerned, I have this in my office desk. You know, your lateness is not my emergency. And this is not an emergency. They're going to get their money. It's just going to take time, but I want to know what I'm voting for. That's why the people put me here. So with that, Counselor Patch, you've got your one minute of fame coming up.
I don't call it fame, but thank you, Mr. President. The bottom line is, it's a late because it was agreed on late, and it, the money is already appropriated, we're going to, you're going to make these patrolmen and superior officers wait longer, where the money is already appropriated, and you're going to have the same piece of paper in front of you next week. It, it, it only took me a minute to read what's in front of me here, so if you need a whole two more days or a week to read it.
Point of inquiry. Counselor, Counselor, you've said, you've said that already.
I'm not surrendering the floor.
You've, you've said that already, can you repeat yourself?
I'm just saying that.
Give us some new information.
I have new information? The bottom line is, in 35 years, I have never seen any, any contract from the municipal, any municipal group go to ways and means or whatever, because you're going to have the same, you're going to have to vote on the same thing that's in front of us tonight. That's what I'm going to say. And I, I think it's unfair to the police department to make them wait any longer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, Counselor, may I say this is going to be the first time in 35 years you've seen it done. Counselor, Mr. Chairman.
I just have one question for Counselor Patch. How much is the package worth in, in dollar value? It, it seems like you know more about the package than I do. I don't know how much this is worth. Do you know how much each year is worth, the 1% and the, the 2.5% and the 4%? Or 4.5%?
Counselor, no, I don't.
Okay.
I have complete, I have complete faith in my mayor. And I have complete faith in the, in the, in the Superior Officer Patrolman Union.
I believe I have the.
Counselors, Counselors, I just shut off your mics, because we have enough. Enough cross-talk, it's going into committee, the meeting is on Wednesday, and we're going to bring it out next Monday, bottom line. You got another piece of late motion? There a motion on the floor to take up the late motion? All in favor, all opposed, voting so ordered?
Late motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor requests the MBTA to follow up on a prior request made in January 2013 to every representative for Mass DOT and the MBTA to discuss the impact the rate of speed of the commuter line trains has on homes in the Oak Island in Lower River Street neighborhoods. The council did not receive a response to Mayor Rizzo's letter dated January 31st, 2013, addressed to Ms. Beverly Scott of the MBTA.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have no knowledge whatsoever as to whether or not Beverly Scott is still employed by the MBTA. It's, it's been over a year now since the motion was put in. The people on Lower River Street, the people in Oak Island are actually sick and tired of the trains rolling through there at 60, 70 miles an hour. The speed limit on 1A, I believe, is 50 miles an hour, yet we allow trains to roll through neighborhoods that are probably 15 feet in some cases from residents down there. So I would, I would like to add on to this motion, to have the mayor send this directly to the Secretary of Transportation at the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and maybe then we'll get some type of a response, a representative to come up here and answer as to why those trains can't slow down to probably at least maybe 50 miles an hour, 40 miles an hour when they leave Chelsea until they get to the Westland Bridge. There are homes here, in some cases, the foundations of those homes are being affected by some people. And again, if one of those trains were to derail at 60, 70 miles an hour, you'd have a real serious problem down there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I just want to support the counselor's motion, you know, this is, this is a late communication, and this is a proper one because it's in an emergency situation. We had a fatal accident happen down there within the past few days, and this is the second one in the past five or six years. So this is something that's directly affecting our community. Two lives have been lost, most recently, because of issues like this. So this is something that needs to be addressed immediately in an emergency situation. Thank you.
Is there any other business, Madam Clerk? No other business? Motion adjourned, so move.